Six oh two, I'll call the meeting to order and pause for a moment of silent reflection. The pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the five of the United States of America. And to their brotherhood, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Willie Bowles, will you leave us in a roll call, please?
I will be glad to.
Hold on, pause. Is Steve online? He said he was going to. I just wanted to make sure if he was in the waiting room that we got him in. It's okay if he's not. I just.
He's been invited, but he's not.
Okay, that's fine. Good for him. He's on vacation. All right, Willie, now you can leave us in a roll call.
Brian Williams here, Jerry Burmeister.
Here.
Shane Davis here. Steve Denny. Bruce Skag.
Here. Four out of five members, we have established forum. Approval of minutes from the May meeting. These are in the Google Drive. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns regarding these minutes?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the May twenty twenty-five minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Moving on to clerk treasurer's report. This is in the Google Drive also. Willie, do you have anything to add?
Well, you've got everything in front of you. I think you can see where we're at, see the bank accounts in good shape and other than that, the best news of the month is I'm gonna be a great grandfather, so that's a great, great.
That's a great thing.
Great, great, yeah, that's it.
Awesome. Also, we have the claims for the month of May. In your Google Drive. Willie, do you have anything to highlight there?
No, not really.
Okay. If you, if we have any questions for Willie, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the May twenty twenty-five claims as presented.
I'll make a motion to approval for the May.
Claims, perfect. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the approval of the May twenty twenty-five claims. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried unanimously. Claims are accepted. Moving on to department reports, we will start with the police.
I have the police department report for May. Officers E B, Owen, and Hughes all participated in the PAC two thirty-two bike rodeo. So they went down there to do electronic bikes and were able to play around with the kid, addition bikes, because they're a big hit. Pendleton Heights Middle School put on a touch-up truck program where various businesses in town brought their big vehicles. They brought the hammer app, but like Dependable Tree Service had their tree trucks down there. All the kids could come out and try to decide what profession maybe they want to be in the future. And, but it was all the big equipment, which was made real nice. Again, and this is starting to get to be a problem, but we, we busted Rollins' house again. They were having a gambling speakeasy and drinking beer, gambling again. And we didn't take anybody into custody. We released them on their own recognizance, but they've been warned again, so we'll see if next year it happens or not. Starting to, starting to get a little crazy over Rollins' house.
Skill nursing week is a rager down there.
Yeah. The, the best is is when they start mounting at you. You can't get me copper, you know, type stuff, so it was awesome. Solid Rock Church had their annual walk party, but it was actually canceled due to storms, so we didn't participate in that. Sergeant Stan Brown is finally fully retired. God love him. He just had some hiccups with the timing. But he is now up to twenty-seven years of full-time service. He is retired and was able to enter the new retirement program, so he holds that record. We also, if you come up to the PD, you'll notice we have a new crime scene trailer. We had bought years ago the box truck from EMA for a dollar. It was a government thing. And it just started petering out slowly. The engines get rough, tires, blah, blah, blah. So what we did now is now that we're in the SUVs and everybody's got tow hitches, we bought a trailer. And we're outfitting the trailer with all the equipment and the needs necessary to take that to a crime scene. And any of the vehicles can take it and it's gonna work out great. So Officer E B has been working real hard on getting it completed. And it's, it's gonna work out nice for us. Dispatched incidents, one thousand two hundred and one for the month, twenty-four crash investigations, two juvenile arrests, seventy-two criminal charges filed against adults involving twenty-three separate belts. One ordinance citation, five ordinance warnings, forty-two criminal code citations and twenty-one warnings. I believe Mr. Shine, are you on that email with Anderson City Court? So hopefully get that.
I saw, I saw an email that a couple, well, a few of them that you sent last two days.
Yeah, I was just, I just wanted going into the summer, double checking that Anderson City's acknowledging our ordinances and so I I called them again. They gave me that attorney's name and I forget.
Paul Polish. Paul, Paul Kudlewski.
There we go. And super nice, he responded, but I put you and him in touch hopefully, so that would work out. Auctions. We talked about auctioning items. Do you have any problem with me reaching out to Boone Auction? I believe they've done it for some communities as well.
Yeah, we use them with the fire department. You got a few things.
Okay, I was gonna call Gunnar or Jeff and say, I don't like looking like a heap of vehicles sitting up on the hills and cleaning up a little bit. So I'll get in touch with them. The final thing was, and we had discussed, we just went through a hiring process. We received about between eighteen and twenty-one applications. Only one of them was a lateral and that lateral ended up pulling his application. So the pool, I hate to say it, wasn't as good as what I was hoping it would be. And one thing as far as feedback that we've heard is we're not getting a lot of laterals, not because of our salaries or equipment or how great the police chief is. But it's because we don't recognize their time of service at the other agency towards vacation. So one of the thoughts was, and because it affects finances that would go before you all, is to acknowledge ten years of service from a lateral transfer. So even if they've got thirty years somewhere else, which age-wise, I don't think that would ever happen because of the new retirement. But we would only acknowledge ten years of their prior service towards retirement. I think South Massafire does that also.
And ten years lines up to what interval on vacation accrual?
Lucas.
Four weeks.
Four weeks? Okay. 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 Thanks for the info. That's something that we would typically put in our salary ordinance. We'd have to amend it at this point to add that in, I believe, right? Because isn't that in there? So I don't know if it's something that we want to entertain mid-year or when we go through the process for the, like going into budget season for the fall and then passing our new salary ordinance for twenty twenty-six. And we can do however we want to do it. My concern from like the administration side is just making sure that we are able to track it and that it's uniformly enforced across the situation, because we've had a couple of incidents where we've played some games with vacation time and I don't really want to get into that situation again. So what do we do? It needs to be documented and it needs to be in, in the salary ordinance.
Absolutely. I've spoken to chief and assistant chief about this. And I asked the question of, do you think it would make a difference? And I think the answer from both was absolutely. And my only concern about waiting would be you're trying to, you're trying to hire somebody.
People now, yeah, and I understand, I'm sensitive to that. So I mean, we can amend the salary ordinance without a whole lot of doing. We're gonna have a special meeting at the end of the final, because Steve's not here and we've got some stuff that needs second read. So if you want us to bring it before that special meeting, we can, we can vet it internally and figure out how we're gonna make that work and, or if we can make it work and go from there.
Yeah, it doesn't go towards the longevity.
Okay.
Goes towards the vacation.
That's fine. But thank you for making that distinction.
That's the only thing it affects is vacation time.
Yes. Yeah, the theory is if I've done ten, fifteen years at another agency and want to come to Pendleton, I've got three, four weeks of vacation and the wife wants to go camping on the weekend and, well, I'm going back to one week and so that's where, that's where the statute.
I had it in a perspective too, and I left Elwood for many reasons and I wanted to be at Pendleton. But I went from six weeks off to two weeks off, even though I had six years of experience. So that's, it's just helping ties good and better candidates. I think we can all agree we want the best people here possible.
Absolutely. Yeah, that, that is definitely our goal always. It's just from our perspective and looking at the town globally, like we've done curve seventy-seven, like we've tried to do all of these things, like large wage increases the last three years. Like, I just want to make sure that as we move the needle for you guys, that it's not like the street department gets disenfranchised because they're not going through, they're not getting the same stuff. And so like, it's not that I don't want you to have what you're asking for. It's that there's a lot that we take into consideration when we make these moves regarding personnel, because it's a small town, it's a small group of people that we employ, everybody talks, everybody knows exactly what, who's getting this and who's not getting that. And so we just don't want to play favorites, so whatever we do needs to be documented and done appropriately, so.
So in, in all reality, chief, is, I mean, are you talking like one guy that would be hired that would affect, or is it retroactive for other employees?
Would be any, in, in my opinion, it'd be any new employee starting out. That's the way it's going into the
New employee in the police department, you're saying?
What's that?
New employee in the police department.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a hiring incentive.
Yeah.
And, and one thing Lucas and I do is we're constantly looking at the hiring incentives from other agencies. And this is one of the, it's right in there. I mean, everything we've been doing is right on with everyone else. And having been a board member and understanding that global thought, one, one argument I make as chief of police is we are different. While each individual entity is its own thing, I didn't become a street guy and a street guy didn't become a cop. We are different and I understand that. For years, we, you weren't allowed a raise because everybody couldn't have a raise and
But we haven't done that. We, we have outpaced everybody's departments by your department. So I'm not gonna fight with you about it and I, and I understand why you're asking for it and I'm not trying to say that you don't do a good job or that there's any problem. I'm just saying there's a lot that we have to consider before we make these things, especially mid-year when we set a salary ordinance. So that's what, that's how it is for me. If you all have a different opinion, we can go down that road, but so.
I think it's achieved. I don't think it's said.
So thank you though for bringing it up and we want to make sure that you're able to attract top talent. That's, that's the concern in every department. We should be very mindful of how we do it.
Well, an interesting thing today, we just had an interview an hour ago and this is way different for me. Normally I've had reserve staff to move into full con or I have a lateral from another department and this particular applicant has none of that and so other departments sometimes start employees in the police business cheaper until they go to academy, then they get a pay bump and all that. We've never done that either because our guys always went right to the road and did the job. So it's, again, it goes back to growing things. Times are changing. It's, and it's definitely interesting, so.
For sure.
Hopefully the applicant we talked to earlier is a good fit. We'll see.
Yep.
You've been able to attract good officers over the last few years from different agencies. Why, why do you think it's different now? I mean, very recently you've attracted two from APD.
One benefit, one benefit with the two I brought in, they live in town. And their families, one of them in town. The benefits of working in town and living in town is they get to go home for dinner with their family. They get to, if it's a night shifter, they're coming home when they're waking up. Whereas if they've worked at another agency, they can't do that. And something else we do, and it's, it's not inappropriate because we're on duty, radio's on, but if my kids have got a baseball game at the sports complex, I can go there and I can listen on the radio and be on call. So those are all the benefits. And the two we got are turning out awesome. But living in town was, was a huge draw for them. Yeah, the family part.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
So, perfect. All right, thank you. We'll talk about it and maybe it can get on the agenda for that late month meeting.
Perfect. Thank you.
Moving on to the park. We have interim park director Joe Knoll here.
So you have.
I think, I think he dug his, I think he dug his heels in on me to enter him.
We'll start interviewing. But you have my report in your packet and the only thing that I would add is some good news. The last item on our report was about the pickleball court. And we were waiting on funds to have that done and thanks to the RDC, we are now on that.
It's exciting.
That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Anything for Joe? Thanks.
Right, thanks, Joe.
Moving on to planning department. Denise is our interim planning director right now while Hannah is tending to a family matter. So Denise, I'll turn it over to you.
Denise, I want to cover reporting for not only the planning department in general, but then also for projects that Hannah Rose oversees, myself, my projects, and also Karen Craig. He is, he is not able, he's out of town today, so. So starting off here, we've got just our general planning department report. Things are, you know, are moving. They're a little bit slower this year as far as with new construction. But with Baker's Point, starting up with development, we expect that those numbers will start to pick up. Just a lot of our subdivisions are built out, the Carrot Blend, the Fall subdivision and some sections there at Hudson Farm. So we're looking forward to new development going out here, out to the west here, probably here in the next six months. As far as our planning meetings, we did not have any business for a planning commission. Border zoning appeals, we did have one variance request, which was granted. It was regarding accessory structure that they were seeking a height variance. It's a little bit taller than what the maximal height allowances, the maximum height, eighteen feet. They are seeking twenty-four feet with some special needs and desires for their family to have a two-car garage within a higher second floor kind of multi-purpose space there. But it was very well fitting within the area as well as it was still under their primary structure height there, so. And that was well received. We also had HBC. We had a petition that was presented there for property at one hundred and fifteen West State Street. That is the Tyler Martin building. It reads regarding the lower one-story section of his building. And so he is currently in the midst of remodeling that, working on the exterior facade. And so he sought a seventy-two thousand dollar grant, getting half of that granted by HBC. The renderings were, were beautiful and I think that the town will be very excited to be able to see that improvement. And it's not only exciting, but then also the roof cap and top with some metal material that's gonna look really sharp, but then also complement our. Urban forestry, I'm not gonna speak on that right now. I'm gonna share that a little bit later on with Cindy that we have. As far as site development plans, we do have three that are kind of at different stages, but still for the most part, a little early on Fairfield in the hotel there, their secondary flat just got approved. They're just south of Henderson Way. There's about ten acres there. It's gonna be planted lots one through five and that hotel will sit kind of in the southwest corner of that parcel for about two acres. So we're kind of going back and forth with some things that they need to kind of tighten up and some final approvals. Same thing with BP gas station there. That's gonna sit there on the southeast corner there at North Garretway there at State Street. Wawa gas station, I don't know if you've been over there to Delville, Chesterfield area, but it's a beautiful facility. And we were able to attend their grand opening and I'm excited for when that comes to us at about twenty-six. So Wawa is getting close. So we've just got some final items for review. Once that gets approval, then we'll submit their building permits and be ready to start. Subdivisions, things are pretty nicely in Baker's Point. We're working on roadway constructions. Also Ryan Rashers met with them today to do some inspections on the water. Things went well with that. And then we also have Hudson Farm that's continuing to develop. We're kind of moving into the next phase with Holt Springs. So we'll be reviewing that here, but they are probably about a hundred and fifty homes still left to develop, but they they're, they seem to be non-stop. Arabian's Point, they're working on their final homes, so that subdivision will be completely built out here very soon. And we have our Elm Street, Main Street project that we have that is going to be starting up here this next month. We'll talk about that in a little bit. But it's gonna be very nice to be able to have that sidewalk improved in front of those new homes there. So be able to complete that walkability areas. Next slide, we don't really have to go through unless you have questions here. It's our project dashboard. The coloring there on the far right just kind of indicates kind of green is going well. Blues projects really haven't got started and then yellow, we might have had a little bit of a hiccup or hole or an issue that we're addressing. And then, and then we've got red as well, but we can kind of go through those here a little bit in detail. We're going to share with you kind of highlights of just the progress that has taken place here this last So starting out, Jacob, if you want, go ahead and go on to the very next slide there. Starting out with that US thirty-six rerash on Water Street improvement. Very excited to get that kickstarted next week. So next Wednesday, eighteenth at three P M, we're gonna be meeting with the awarded contractor, which is CDM Smith. CDM Smith is the contractor that actually is working with the added travel lanes, that US thirty-six, State Road thirty-eight, State Road sixty-seven improvement. That is mainly on that is NDOT. We are kind of tagging on to that project with some pedestrian enhancements and so forth and lighting. But for this, this project is the same consultant, so we're gonna be working with Scott Santrum. And we're gonna kind of talk about next week as far as timelines and kind of what we can expect here with the plan setting that they're gonna be working for us. There's gonna be a lot involved with that, so it's probably gonna take a year, maybe two years, but it's gonna give a good guidance to when that area is developed. It's gonna address traffic issues, it's going to address optimal water street and State Road sixty-seven, which is a very dangerous intersection for our community, taking a look at that. And also to kind of looking at just connectivity and kind of how that, that land can be best utilized. That project is covered eighty percent by the MPO, so it's been a great opportunity for us to be able to take a big picture. Jacob, the next one there are pedestrian crossing signal project. Those are two crosswalks that we are doing as kind of a test, a pilot. The materials we've been waiting on, they are all now in. And so Scott Reske, Craig Switzer, and Rick Ballen are gonna be working together to putting those in and getting those installed here in the next few weeks. One will be at the middle school, so between the high school soccer fields and Pendleton Heights Middle School there right off of three hundred west. That one will be electronic, hardwire, and then we'll also have here off of Park, Als Park Drive between East Street and the Park Office. We're gonna have right in there where the parking is in that wooded area. We're gonna have a good crosswalk there, so that is gonna be solid. Next one, six hundred west reconstruction. So at Baker Point, they developed that subdivision. They've got the very far north road, which is it's a Bancroft Drive. And so that is going to connect State Road thirty-eight to six hundred west. So that is gonna be the second entrance of that subdivision. We have as a town, future plans to expand and widen six hundred west to be able to help with the traffic there. So in the meantime, we needed kind of a transitional plan. So Banning Engineering provided those engineering drawings for Baker's Point to be able to help kind of guide that and how best that then it can not have to restart all over and, you know, backtrack. It'll just mesh in with our plans and widen that when we have. So that is actually complete. It's kind of a thirty percent PE throwing of that, that construction that happens in the future. So that line, that project is now complete. The next one is comprehensive, comprehensive plan update. This one we just held on the second of June, our fourth steering committee meeting went really well. We were able to take the draft initial looks at our land use map and then also the definitions for those classifications. Very important for our community. When, when here we are, we're growing, we're having conversations with developers quite a bit. We as staff, leadership, and as a community, it's good to identify, you know, what we envision for those areas, but at the same time, having those conversations with those key stakeholders, those developers, that they also understand, you know, what as a community, what we're envisioning. So that was presented to the steering committee for their input. And then here at the end of the month on the thirtieth, we are having a big ideas open house. It's gonna be hosted at Community Sports and Wellness. They opened the doors for us to have that there in their facility. And it's going to in tandem actually be at the same time with our downtown revitalization plan. And so what we're going to be doing is sharing the progress on those plans and also at the same time gathering feedback from our community. So we really strongly encourage you to come out. We're with HWC on that project with Winnie, Hayley, and then Rachel. The next slide is our downtown revitalization. Same thing, a big open house, a big ideas open house here at the end of the month. But in this particular project, we focus in on our steering committee, also on the second of June, visioning for a downtown area, what it could look like redevelopment-wise, those infill projects. We had a lot of fun on that, on that day, just talking about, you know, what can be potential uses and, you know, whether it's mixed use or commercial, maybe even some residential, just kind of expanding our downtown area footprint. And, and in doing, in, in those conversations, we also talked about parking needs and kind of where those can lie. So we're excited to be able to share with the community, you know, what in, it may not be five, ten years from now, but maybe thirty, fifty years now. And town hall repairs, just a quick update on this. We've seen all the windows, all that's been repaired. But we have the last final repair of our brick as well as the parapet topper that used to be on this building is going to be replaced. So Hannah Rose has been working with DMA Masonry and they're gonna be coming in July and be starting that project. The added travel lanes project here, we talked about it just a few moments ago. Just wanted to let you know that due to funding shifts and changes with federal, kind of that funnel through the MPO and where this progress, or the progress of this project was. Unfortunately, the letting for construction is going to be delayed until their next cycle. So constructions for the road improvements out here will not take place until fall of twenty twenty-eight. Latest to be of twenty-nine. In the meantime, we will continue working with CDM Smith on roadway acquisition, just some final PE and so forth. So unfortunately, just the way that NDOT works with their funding, when things kind of get put back, it kind of goes with their, their letting cycle.
On this right here, is it still too late for the school to potentially look at doing those tunnels? I know we talked about it a long time ago.
So, yes. My hope was.
Is your mic on?
Probably not. My hope was, we proposed that idea. In fact, the town paid for a study to see what the cost would be for those tunnels. I don't think this is the NDOT project, right? We just got to be the add-on now, the ornaments to the Christmas tree with the trails and some light. But it's their project. It was ready to go to letting and there was a delay with I think, I think right away wasn't done yet. And because of their cycle, remember we talked about it, it's about five years for funding. So they have to go to the end of the line, which means they weren't ready to go when the funding was, so they had to get kicked back.
That's right. That's what I was thinking. If we got more time to this, go back.
Design. And we could talk to them, but NDOT, they're like, look, we already put this project on hold.
I did, I didn't know. I just thought if they're gonna.
I, I am totally with you. I brought that up the last meeting. I'm like, do we have a window here? And they're like, no.
Because it was an eighty-twenty split. It would have been a great idea for the school to, we'd pay twenty percent to do that.
It would have been five million dollars is what the study came out, so twenty percent of that would have been a million. And so.
I just didn't know. I just thought that since we're talking about it right here, it'd be a good idea.
The other thing that's happened since that too is the wall loss coming. So the geometrics to make it work or no water there. That makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
So, but that's a good question. I asked the same thing. I said, does this reopen, do we know a possibility of? I said, no, with the finance. And then the engineer said, plus, wall was now there.
Because, you know, it's gonna be the next thing that are gonna come to us and we're know what we're gonna do for pedestrian safety at that.
Well, there's extensive pedestrian safety.
Incredible, yeah.
Yeah.
It's in the middle and the.
Oh, yeah, the ideas are gonna be different, so.
And a hawk signal, which is just a brand name, which is, it's like a railroad crossing for pedestrians.
It's like what you see on Olio and a hundred and twenty-six.
Yep. So next best thing is gonna be.
So.
So here, that's kind of in motion in the Pendleton McCarty Drain Project. These projects did not have updates here this past month. I'll go ahead and start talking about the McCarty Drain. On this particular project, we are, so with the alignment of the storm drain that goes under CSX, one of about a four inch variation that was going to conflict with some sanitary on one end and also water main on the other end. And in that work, they have some de-watering efforts that they have come into, you know, in those efforts to lower the water main. With the fact that that hugs the CSX railroad, they have a de-watering plan approval process. So right now they're in PE phase, trying to get that finalized, finalize, get that stamped, get that submitted to CSX or then resimetal and get that approved, get back on the schedule. So that's kind of where we're at. Right now there is probably about a 30-day delay, which Brandon Buck and UCS, their team, they're very efficient. So would not anticipate that, you know, once CSX gives us that green light, they're going to be ready to go. So probably wrap up here instead of the end of July, maybe the end of August though. But they're working really hard to get everything to CSX. The next one, you can slide to the image there, you can pass that. Elm Street, Main Street Reconstruction. Update on that is that our electric department has relocated all the power lines on Elm Street, which is on the north side of Elm Street. That was a huge cost saving. So Craig and his team worked to get those relocated, so that's already done. And then our contractors, they are going to get a schedule out to us here this next week and then expect to start a lot of the major construction in July. Start seeing a lot of, lot of work in that area. Next project is our 2023-2 Community Crossings Project. We are waiting for the contractors to submit their final, it's just the retainage. And so once we get that, we're going to get that paid and then we're ready to close out with NDOT. North Heritage Way Construction. So with this project, you've seen the probably materials, equipment out there north of State Street there at North Heritage Way. We had a great pre-construction meeting. We are very fortunate to have Dick Wicker. She's with Wicker Consulting. He is going to be kind of the eyes on the ground for the town of Pendleton. He will be not only inspecting the work that's being done, but then he's also checking their materials, materials to make sure that they are consistent with the plans that were approved. So they are getting ready to kind of start full swing. They just kind of got things in place and you'll see a lot of movement. They're going to be doing not only the earth movement, they're going to be doing some sanitary sewer a little bit south on South Heritage Way on the west side there. That is between Pendleton Way and the school corporation. They're going to connect into that sanitary main there through Fall Creek. And then they're going to come up to the north. They're going to then lead up to then that first intersection, which will be a part of Phase 1. And in that, it's going to be a lift station. So a lot of work there. And then also two detention ponds are part of this project. Water main improvements is then, and then eventually the breakaway. So that will be great to be able to see movement there. I think that it will coincide with a lot of then interest and movement for developers there as that land develops. Next one is I-69 Interchange Master Plan Update. This is an update to our I-69 plan that was approved by the RBC. And the updates to this is going to consist of more taking that higher level look down to a 30 feet, kind of in the air view, looking at architectural visions of kind of what the buildings and structures can look like, that connectivity within the land, which would be all west of I-69 and north and south of State Road 38, probably out towards CBC or GVC mortgage, sorry. And then about midway in Gaines Properties there and Mystic Waters. Going to look at a lot more greater detail of kind of where roadways can go, looking at road, roadblocks, red flags and so forth, and utility needs kind of in that area. And then a little bit general projection, a little bit farther on out to our town boundaries there to the I-69. And so we're looking forward to getting that started. We just had a kickoff meeting last week. HWC, Chris Hamm is going to be working with us on this project. And we just submitted our steering committee member, we, our members. They are fully committed, very excited to be a part of this project. And then we also are going to have four focus groups sometime in July. So we should be getting this started by the end of this month, 1st of July, and it will run through the end of the year, hopefully to have this plan update approved no later than January 26. Road Impact Zone Improvement Plan. Last month, we had the steering committee members appointed. We did this one just because of state statute through town council, at a town council meeting. Those members have all been notified of their appointments and they're ready to go. We're going to have an orientation for them come August and get that going and underway. The Tree Campus K-12 Program. We're excited that the elementary, we've been, I've been working with Kim Collier over at the school. They are ready to submit their application by the end of this month. And hopefully we'll hear over the summertime before the school starts that they will be the first school in our community to be acknowledged as a Tree Campus K-12 Program. And we're hoping that that will be infectious and to be a motivation for other schools with not only our school system, but then also even the town school system. We're planning on doing that little joint project here this next year. We think that we can kind of build this and make this a very community-wide program. And also just wanted to share, we'll go to the next slide. Part of their application, because there is some education components of this. And so this is one of the lessons that we just had here on the 16th of May. And we had a lot of fun, oh, Joe, the park system, we were able to work with them. They were able to introduce and have the children on their iPads. It was for the fifth graders. We had 123, I think, surveys maybe submitted. And they gave their input on what they liked to see at the park. We also had the museum that hosted museum tours. And then we had a water flow testing there at the creek. And then we also had a park board member, Andrew Holloway. He works for the Monsey Sanitary District and he talked about his electrofishing. And then we had urban forestry there. We talked about tree identification, went through a little fun exercise on how to identify a tree and then how to assess a tree and input that data into our treekeeper song. It was a lot of fun. It was a good day. Perfect weather. Tree inventory, the only thing is, is that this has started. We have plant growth management, Tanya Dodson. She has started her inventory this year. She started at the 40 entrance and then she's going to be focusing on some downtown trees. So she will probably assess about 500 trees. And that'll be updated also in that treekeeper. These are Kerry's program. We can slide past all of these to preserving Main Street Grant. This is the Oprah Grant that the application is due July the 17th. And this is regarding restoring historic buildings through in their downtown area. This is $2 million. I believe that the two candidates potentially can be awarded for this. He is working on getting letters of support from local stakeholders at this point and also gathering material for that application. So that will be, actually it will be submitted if not be for our next town council meeting shortly thereafter. The next one there is the Galler Walkway. I know that they had that grand opening with the murals there on the wall there at Pendleton Art Society. But in that area too is going to be kind of a gathering space. And right now the town, Rick and Scott, they're working on identifying some good material for the pathway that is ADA compliant. Also Taylor Metz and then Scott Fattlemeyer, they came there at the art society. They are working on, he works with a lot of metal, doing a nice archway gateway area to that space. Pendleton Master Arts and Culture Plan, little update on that. The consultant has been identified. They are working on getting under contract, but it's, we're going to put this on hold for a little bit. We're going to wait until 26 to get this started on this arts and culture plan and for the community. That's some movement here. And I think that is, that is all that I have. And if you have any questions for me, questions for Denise. Thank you.
Are these? Don't run away. I got a question.
Okay.
First of all, my compliments on the tree trimmers and Ricky. They took a lot of dead trees out in the right ways and really helped out a lot. I'm just curious, how does the right of way determine the size of the right of way? And why is it so different, different streets?
History of the town.
Is it done when it's plotted?
Then when it's plotted and then as we've annexed a lot into the county. What's confusing is in those areas, the property lines generally ran to the center line of the road.
Right.
And then that was a easement. The county at the time, now the town, doesn't own it, the property owner does, but there's an easement for the roadway. I'm going to call it a prescription easement for the utilities, the road. So there are parts of Pendleton Avenue that we're experiencing right now where some of the properties go to the center line of the road. Some of them were planted, some of them were, the right way was taken a few years ago. So it's, it's not easy, but it's all over the place. That's generally.
Now in our new subdivisions, are we going with a standard, right?
It was that's plotted. If it's a subdivision, it's plotted, the right of way is plotted, that becomes town property. When the town was originally plotted by Thomas Pendleton, we acquired the right of way. The town had the width of the streets, but right way was acquired for the width of the streets or greater. And so it's.
They do greatly vary in our downtown area. Yes, they can be anywhere from 12 feet to 30.
So some of the oldest parts of town are actually suited for modern days, the right of way there. And the newer homes that were built, sometimes they go right to the center line of the road. So it's sort of, it's intuitively you can think of the opposite.
And as development comes, we work with those property owners like Kyle Smith with Arabian Point. They were sent over the road and then he dedicated that right of way to the town for the public, yeah, and so forth. So we kind of work on those, you know, as they come and take advantage of those opportunities. So.
When you reset, will fire.
One other question, we've had so many problems on State Streets here with trees between the curves and the sidewalks over the years. And I know Sun Ciner Farms is doing the same thing, putting trees out there between the sidewalk and curb. Is, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, so right tree, right place. Unfortunately, we've had the right tree, the wrong place for several years. We've planted ginkgo, maples, oaks, all kinds of trees that are large trees at mature height. So we have now learned in the last 20, 30 years, you know, we've got to have standards in place that we have a brief tree list that limits it to at mature height, that it's going to be only 25, 30 feet. That circumference of that tree isn't going to max out that lane path. So unfortunately, some of them a little bit more narrow than others. Hunt Ciner Farm with that situation was that pud. So we have limited control on that, but we have noticed that they have been planting those larger trees a little too close in proximity. Brett Mayberry has done phenomenal in communicating that with them, that, you know, we need them spaced out. We need to make sure that we keep to a small tree. We provided them the appropriate tree list. So hopefully that will keep things from happening in the future. Any type of new subdivisions, we've got really, you know, good standards to be able to, to guide the right type of tree plantings. And, yes, and I want to, you know, piggyback on what you said earlier. The relationship between brick wall and Craig Switzer, tree core and plant growth has been phenomenal. They really have a good working system, you know, they just kind of let me know which ones being replaced. I mark down if we need to, you know, or remove and replace, then it's worked out really well.
Those from tree core, when they schedule something, it seems to get done.
Yes, yes.
Like that.
They are, they're efficient. They're great in their communication, good follow-through. I agree.
Keep them around. Just the bigger picture. So we're paying the price now for the city of 100 years ago to plant the maple trees. There, it's a soft wood, so they're very susceptible to dropping limbs. And unfortunately, it's on State Street. They.
Expectancy too.
Yeah, they're hitting their life expectancy is exactly what we're seeing. And the problem too is they regenerate center with the ants and everything going after the maple syrup. And, and so when they go, they go quickly. Want me to keep going? Okay, so highlights from town manager. We had a new speed department employee, Aaron Withrow. Very interesting life. Mom was an actor out at Connor Prairie and she enlisted him to be an actor at age 10. And he started working in the blacksmith shop. So he knows, he's got a lot of skills that'll be interesting, knows how to weld. Apparently he's pretty good on heavy equipment already. He's proving good for it. With the town is participating in the county's Greenway Trails. That steering committee is for the Southern Townships only, our brethren in the Fire Territory and then Stony Creek, LaPell and Pat Adams Township, Mark Little. Just so you know, we submitted forms to the, to the state DMA for the damage that we had from the LaPell tornadoes and then also for reimbursement for the assistance we gave LaPell that night. Thanks to everybody, especially Main Street for the flowers. I think we're all in agreement. When the spring comes and the flowers pop downtown, it just changes. We get so many comments. I was at the town manager's conference last week and people were coming up to me and going, wow, I just drove through your town. Holy cow. So. Go to the back conference room, their formatory just made a custom made table for us in the back. It's beautiful. They just arrived today and Chris has already tested it out.
It's the right height.
Right height. Thank God. I am completed their inspection of our water treatment plants and our water system. Couple of things we need to correct, but one of them would take a design change at the new water treatment plant. So we're probably not going to address that. That's probably the biggest issue, but it's not like we're in trouble, right? The guy was very complimentary because he showed up one day, it was not pre-announced. They normally pre-announce a few weeks ahead. And of course, everybody, if they get that, they're cleaning and everything and painting things. Well, our guys didn't even know he was coming and he was very complimentary about how well everything looked. And he's, especially since you didn't know I was coming. So there's a couple of things, the red binder today, we need to sign that. Cause that was one thing he noticed is that our emergency procedures was not up today. It's just basically when we went in and updated some lists and numbers. And then also you're probably going to get some phone calls. This is the time of year where we send out the consumer confidence report, which is a whole bunch of chemicals and ranges and where our ratings are. And nobody knows what it is. But it's by state law, we have to put that out. And so we print it as is. So when you see that, that's, we start to get a phone call, that's what it is. Everything's in normal range.
Has that gone to print yet?
It will go out in the next, well, the June utility billing, which goes out here.
Yeah. Is it possible we send a half sheet? I mean, is there something that we could do to include with that, just to let folks know?
Yeah.
What it is? I mean, I remember last year, it was like we lit a fire in downtown with people just calling.
Yes.
Being like, what is this? And so.
Yes, let's do that.
It's not an easy to read document by any means. It's, the font is this big and it's, it's miserable to get through. So I think that if we can send out some kind of.
Yeah, we'll do something really quick to get the.
Yeah. I know that there's a max that we can include in that billing, like as far as papers, but you could get, even if it was a footnote on the bill, I know we only are limited to characters, but just something to give a little bit of.
Yep. Yeah, we'll jump on that.
Okay.
We can add that to the town website as well.
In Facebook, yeah, that would be great. Both of those. Yeah. Thank you.
So we're going to talk about that tonight, the long-range plan with the bond and then the rate stay and ordinance fees go with that. So I really don't need to talk about that. Just so you know, we did have a hearing about URC considering the water territory. It looks like there's a little bit of lawyering going back and forth, nothing serious. But we'll probably know, get a ruling. They're now telling us probably October is that the attorney's guess. And. Nothing, nothing on this. You can go ahead and go to the end. All right, the only, the only action log item we had, although I did have a couple today, but. An early woman in her 90s. an early woman in her nineties saw a white truck and somebody in an orange shirt hit her mailbox, checked with the guys. Nobody was working in that neighborhood, uh but we went ahead and replaced it just to make sure and be good neighbors. And she was so nice to everybody. We felt that was the right thing to do across the town, I think, eighty-five dollars.
Great. Any questions for Scott? Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks.
Um moving on to new business. Um actually, before we go into the Tri-Capa proclamation, I need a motion to amend the agenda to include acceptance of the Water Utility Emergency Response Plan and Risk Assessment Certification. So do I have a motion to amend the agenda to reflect that as item F?
Oh my God, motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Look at.
I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda to include the acceptance of the Water Utility Emergency Response Plan, Risk Resilience Assessment Certification. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carried unanimously. Okay, that will be item F. Moving on to the Tri-Capa, Tri-Capa proclamation, Sally Childers is here with us tonight. I'm going to read through this proclamation and then we can go out and get a photo with Sally. And I believe we have like a presentation style document, like a pretty one, a, a pretty, oh yeah, you've got it on a nice paper. Perfect. Okay, so here we go. We've got an exciting anniversary for Tri-Capa here coming up. Uh so I'm just going to read through this. Whereas Tri-Capa is an Indiana-based women's sorority founded by several ladies attending Girls Classical School established by May Wright Sewell in Indianapolis. Whereas on February twenty-second nineteen oh one, Beryl Showers, a student at the school, decided to revive the organization and selected her best friend, Irma Rivire, her roommate Mary Sanders and four other friends, Bertha Matthews, Gertrude Zump, Lulu Bear and Frances Roberts. And whereas Tri-Capa members demonstrate kindness in all they do and celebrate the diversity that each member brings to the promotion and development of the sorority they serve in their communities. Whereas each year Tri-Cap is nearly eight thousand members and a hundred and forty-two chapters and ninety-four associate chapters joined with the state organization to contribute approximately one point five million to Indiana charities and students. Since nineteen oh one, Tri-Cap members have donated untold hours and millions of dollars to projects in the state of Indiana. The main work of each chapter is to conduct special projects locally to support each of the sorority's three goals, charity, culture and education. And whereas a group of ladies who wish to bring women into close, unselfish relationships for the promotion of charity, culture and education established the Gamma Pi Chapter, Chapter in Pendleton on June sixth nineteen twenty-five. And whereas Pendleton's Gamma Pi Chapter will celebrate its centennial anniversary and community project dedication on Saturday, June fourteenth twenty twenty-five at the Pendleton Community Public Library. And whereas the chapter is known throughout Madison County for its annual sale of delicious cheese balls, which raises thousands of dollars to support community projects and scholarships in and around Pendleton. And whereas Pendleton is a more vibrant community due to the Gamma Pi Chapter, whose dedicated members contribute hundreds of volunteer hours to the benefit of our community. Therefore, it be resolved, the Pendleton Town Council does hereby proclaim June fourteenth twenty twenty-five as Gamma Pi Chapter of Tri-Capa Centennial Celebration Day. Further, it be resolved that the Pendleton Town Council does hereby encourage its residents to recognize and celebrate this momentous occasion. We will pass and adopt this tonight, um which is the twelfth of June twenty twenty-five. Sally, is there anything you'd like to share about Gamma Pi Chapter in Pendleton?
Yeah, we do sell cheese balls. We also sell flower bulbs in the fall and flowers in the spring. And we give high school senior scholarships, support the senior art show. Um we host the top ten percent banquet and banquet, similar banquet for special needs students. Um we support the library and
Which is tonight, yes.
Um so yeah, and we've, I, I can say that my grandmother was a member, my mother. My grandmother was not in Pendleton. My mother was a member in, at the Gamma Pi Chapter. I am a member, my two sisters, Annie and Katie, Katie Burke, Annie Wills.
Yep.
Um our members and my daughter is a member, so she's a fourth generation member. And yeah.
That's great.
We've just done a lot of.
Well, on behalf of all of us, thank you so much for what our chapter of Tri-Capa does. We really appreciate you and I think we all enjoy the cheese balls, but also all of the other fabulous things that you do for our community. So Willie, did you have the pretty coffee? Yeah, okay, let's sign one of those and then we'll get a photo with Sally. And thank you for being here tonight. And why don't you tell us a little bit about the project that you guys are dedicating on Saturday?
Okay, so um it is a percussion patio, so it's um we did a lot of brainstorming to come up with something special for our centennial. My daughter found this company and it's a British company, Percussion Play. And this is, if you Google percussion play street quartet, you'll see and you'll be able to hear these instruments being played and then we had to find a host and the library was the host. They were very excited when we presented it to them and as were the friends of the Pendleton Community Public Library. Uh so it's, it's a percussion patio.
That's great.
We've added a bench and there's going to be a marker for anyone who contributed a thousand dollars or more to the project. And there's going to be landscaping. So we knew we couldn't do this by ourselves. So it's, I would just say it's amazing what a community can do when they come together for a project and that's.
And this dedication is at two o'clock on Saturday, right?
It's, yeah.
Reaching two and four. Yep.
The celebration remarks at two thirty and we got some high school students and some active, active academy students to actually play the instrument.
Oh, son.
So that's.
That's great. Okay, let's hop out here and get a photo with this proclamation and we all sign.
Very cool.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we're just wherever you want.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of the cheese ball.
Yeah. Official now. Can you take one portrait? I think it's easier for the citizens, folks, to use the portrait.
Okay.
There you go. Not portrait mode, just like portrait orientation.
Let me switch to that button.
No, no, no.
Do you want me to take one too?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, my husband take one. That's Tom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like somebody wouldn't move, worry about paperwork.
Thank you so much for being here. We look forward to celebrating with you on Saturday.
That'd be great.
Thank you so much. And if you need another copy then.
I'm good.
Oh, yeah, please have one for you. I love how they time the cheese ball sales to like line up with the holidays too, like so. You're not ready for Thanksgiving unless you have a freezer full of like. Thank you all. Okay, moving on to ordinance twenty-five eleven, which is the town code amendment on procedures for adopting ordinances. If you've been following along with us for any amount of time, you know, there's been a little bit of a transition in how we call for um votes on things. And apparently we were doing things that weren't exactly um like there was a little bit of conflict in our internal code. So Denise, do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, I would say, yeah, yeah. Uh so, yes, kudos to Dinsmore, uh Rob Shine and his team. They have really done a phenomenal job of really getting familiar with not only our unified development ordinance, it's now what, three hundred and fifty pages, I think? But then also connecting that in with our town code, uh as well as reviewing that up against state uh state code. So uh from time to time periodically, it's always a good practice anyway to be able to take a look at your code, your standards and so forth and making sure that they are in sync and aligns with the current law. And so they have been working hard to do that um and, and have brought to our attention of some things that we need to get uh, you know, addressed. And not only to clarify some things, but it also allows us to become more efficient in our processes. Uh and it'll specifically with this um ordinance that I've presented in front of you tonight will put us in alignment with that code thirty-six seven. Uh it will clarify, it's going to create a better roadmap for adoption processes and will also remove that uh ambiguity, you know, of our current town code, uh as permitted by law. Uh the primary amendment that is being presented that you'll see and the changes there, and I know you've got the red line and um then they've got the uh, the code there as well uh for your review. The main um changes is that our current town code requires two reads for every ordinance that came in front of the town council. However, there is an allowance through state codes for any zoning change or a, an amendment to the zoning ordinance. So for example, a zoning change should be a rezone and then an amendment to the zoning ordinance would be like our amended U D O. So those kind of funnel, they are first presented to plan commission. Plan commission then considers all the facts, then if they vote in support and give a favorable recommendation to your body or vote, then previously we had to have two reads, so we'd have to go through a first read and a second read at town council. Um or uh first read, we, they can plan commission, second read at town council. What uh these amendments is, are doing is, is that in those circumstances where it does come through and receive a favorable from plan commission when appropriate, then when it is turned over and submitted to town council for consideration and being on the town council uh agenda, then it will allow that uh you all would only have to do one uh in those circumstances. All of the, all the other type of ordinances that come before you, you will continue with having that first read and then a second read. Uh there's a little bit of a breakdown, but when um, you know, how it works as far as if you so choose to have, because the way that that first read is your first introduction, that second read is intended to be at then a different meeting, a different night, uh say a different, the next uh if, if you so choose. However, um what, what would take place is that still you would have that right to waive that two-read requirement uh within two different settings and allow your body to also have one read, then a vote, then to uh waive that two-read requirement within one meeting and then move into your second read and then vote from there and make that uh an act and an establishment. So um want to turn it over to Rob, is there anything um you want to add to that? But that is pretty much, you know, kind of what uh those amendments uh provide uh for you all and.
Denise, I think you hit the, all the highlights. I mean, I think that the goal here is, is just from time to time to continue to look at the town code. Make sure as your things match enough with Indian state code. And that's what we're trying to do is to be syndicated.
The only thing I want to draw attention to, just because we do this relatively often, is the suspension of rules. So we're still going to do unanimous consent to suspend the rules. However, if we consider an ordinance for second read on the night of introduction, now there is a requirement that it passes by a two-third margin, correct? Like it has to have two-thirds of the council in favor of it.
Yes, uh so if you, if we just had, for example, if we wanted to take this ordinance.
Right.
You know, ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash eleven and, and consider a, a motion to adopt it this evening.
Right.
We would then have a motion to suspend the rules. That has to be unanimous.
Right.
And then if you add second reading to take a vote on it, then it would need to have two-thirds.
Yes, okay. That's different than how, I, I just want to make that clarification, because I don't think that's ever been brought up to us. And, and we suspend the rules relatively often.
Yeah.
Uh so I just wanted to make sure that we understood that uh, that if we had a full house, it would have to have a four.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, any questions for Rob or Denise regarding this? Okay, then this constitutes first read. Would you like to, would we like to suspend the rules? The second read on the same night as introduction. If we want to, okay, you were, okay, Brian's going to make a motion that we suspend the rules. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and allow for second read on the night of introduction. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carried unanimously. Okay, so now we have suspended the rules. I will now entertain a motion for second read of ordinance twenty-five eleven, town code amendment on procedures for adopting ordinances. I have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance twenty-five eleven, town code amendment on procedures for adopting ordinances on second read. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carried unanimously. Look at us, guys, we did it.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to twenty-five twelve, electric rate ordinance. Scott, I'll let you talk about that.
Uh Madam President, if I could, I'll talk to both the next, this ordinance and the next ordinance. So big picture, start with that. Uh this is um due to the fact we need to expand the existing substation out by McDonald's, uh the Hammond, painted after Dave Hammond. And uh the reason for that expansion is that we're almost at capacity and also there is not redundancy going to the other side. There's not a line going to be, a second line going to the other side of sixty-nine, plus we don't have redundancy. I think I talked to you earlier during the lapel tornadoes. Had it been a hot summer night and air conditioners were running, we would not have been able to run the whole town off a little bit of space that we leased from Duke at the substation there on Madison Avenue and sixty-seven near Angle Road. Um so based on our long-range plan that was drawn up by AMPA, uh this is the first thing that we need to do. Some of the other things in the long-range plan i- is going to be based on what areas of Pendleton develop first. But this part is, no matter what the scenario is, what we're um expanding the substation for, no matter the scenario, we need to do that. Okay. Um so to pay for that, we need a five million dollar um bond to cover it. This rate study assumes the payments for that five million dollar bond. Now, one of the things that you may see in here, if you've caught it, the bond for the, the bond ordinance is for up to six million, and that's just in case there's a hiccup. But the rate study is based on a five million dollar bond. If we feel that if we have to go to six million, we can come back, you know, twelve months, eighteen months later, look at that small increase uh rate to cover that extra million. So to be conservative with our rate payers and our residents, we're going to do the study based on five million. But yet we do have the capacity under the bond ordinance for six million. Um if you remember, because the timeline to get uh large transformers, uh we went ahead and did the bids, the winning bid, thank God, was only a yearly time. Um the second place bid, they needed two years. So. Anyway, so does that, the big picture answer questions? The only other thing I would point out on this um study is that the accountants used historic cost of electricity in here. When um AMPA gave us our rates for this year, they were actually going to go down. But remember, we, the residents paid for the electricity and then what we add is for our cost of delivering that electricity locally. Because they're probably going to see a lower amount, even though it'll feel like a six point five percent increase, they'll feel like they'll be paying about four and a half percent based on the lower rate. It's a little accounting trick, but um I want to make sure that you're aware of it in case somebody asks you a question.
Because the way the tracking factor works.
Because the way the tracking.
Okay.
But Scott, from start to finish on a project this magnitude, how long, are we looking at here? Are we looking at five years? What's?
Well, we really can't. We'll start some pre-construction about the time when the transformer gets here, but that's a year out, right? So uh but this starts the process. There is some preliminary engineering work, some soft costs that are involved, some construction in preparation for it. Um also constructing the second line across I sixty-nine um to six seventy-five.
So in theory, we could be a couple, two, three years in the road, start.
I think, I think you, I, we would be able to have the redundancy and the added capacity. Minimum would probably be the fastest. You can't, we can't, it can't happen until the transformer is in place. That takes a year. So.
It's definitely good grief, honey, as a town.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're already seeing construction on that way, like it's, yeah, it's here. Any questions for Scott? And both of these went before utility rate advisory board last night, correct? And both of these went before utility rate advisory board last night, correct?
The rate stay went before.
The rate standard.
Got the bond.
The bond is, doesn't have to, okay.
Right. And they, oh, but thank you for bringing that up, they, they recommended that, um, for passage.
Favorable recommendation, and they had a quorum last night?
They did have a quorum.
Yay, okay, great, okay.
If I may, I would have, only just add what Shab said, the REEDY Financial Group prepared the rate study and met set forth in the ordinance, all this is based upon, so.
Any other questions? Okay, then I will entertain a motion for approval of ordinance twenty five twelve. Do we have to do, wait, are you good with just one read tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, perfect. Uh, so I don't need a motion.
The hearing will be for the rate ordinance, the hearing will be in July.
Okay.
Second read.
That's right, because it has to have public notice, okay? So this is just, um, this serves as first read of twenty five twelve. Perfect, and then we will reconvene with, um, the public hearing in July. Okay, moving on to, is there, were there any questions for twenty five thirteen regarding the bond? Okay, then this constitutes first read of twenty five thirteen, electric revenue bond ordinance. Okay, moving on to twenty five fourteen, redistricting the boundaries of the town council, local, town council, local council redistricting. Um, this has been something that's been kind of kicking around and I will talk about it for a minute and then Rob can add in anything else. Um, so it seems to me from what I can piece together that this was initially supposed to be done in twenty twenty, like either recertify your council districts or redraw them, um, given the census that was taking place in twenty twenty. Because of COVID, the census was delayed and so there was also a little bit of uncertainty about who actually had to redistrict. Like school corporations, even though they have district seats, they don't have to redistrict, but there's questions about whether municipalities and how big you were, whether you qualified to redistrict or not. Anyway, um, we did not redistrict. Then in twenty twenty two, they issued saying you had an extension to redistrict. Um, and so now that, that grace period is up on June thirtieth of this year. And so, um, we worked with Dinsmore and they worked with some folks and came up with um, this new revamped map. You'll see that, so there's a few considerations on how this was drawn, um, that are set forth by the state. One, they have to have a less than ten percent population deviation from district to district. You want to minimize your, your splitting of precincts. And then the districts have to be quote compact and contiguous, so there's not a whole lot of like exact terminology on this. Um, and so this is kind of the best that we've come up with. District one remaining kind of where it has always been. District two extending out to I sixty nine to capture the additional, um, population that is in the apartments at, um, here, I always forget the name of the, Hamilton Station Apartments. Um, and then District three extending a little bit further south than what it had, um, previously. So that's where we're at with that. Rob, what else do you have to add to the story?
Yeah, I, I think, again, I think you hit it, you know, the nail on the head, my test consists of statutory requirement. Um, there was some delay with COVID and the, the town, this town of Pendleton's not unique to other communities that, you know, that we need to adopt this, um, by statute. So the legislature has given us a little bit of an extension, but again, we try to, we worked with the consultant. Um, I've worked with them with a different community as well, and you just try to make, um, these, um, districts as close, uh, to equal as possible and we like to not have, you know, a large, uh, basically margin of error or one district being significantly more populated. So that's what we've done, I would say, as you all know, um, each, um, individual member of the town votes for all five of you. So that's, um, that is something that, uh, also our consultant considered, so. Um, some communities, for example, if you're in a district, you only vote for that council member in the district and then if there's an at-large, at-large. And so we kept everything the same in here and so this ordinance, um, accounts for that, so it's really just replacing in essence, um, the map and then also you'll see on there, there's a description which the software provides to give you an idea.
Also, one thing, um, the other thing that we took into, or they took into consideration is that all of us that are sitting here remain in our districts that we are currently representing. Uh, so Brian is still in District three and Steve's still in District two and Shane's still in District one. Uh, so that was another consideration, um, given that we're geographically relatively small, it's tough to, to be up these areas. Uh, especially using the precinct boundaries as one guideline and then also that ten percent deviation and these are extremely close. I mean, within fifty people of each other, so we're definitely within the ten percent deviation on that, so. Um, are there any questions for Rob or anybody regarding this? Okay, then this will serve as first read on this and we will, uh, aim to get this approved when we set the special meeting for the end of the month. Okay, great. Item F, amended, um, item, which is the Water Utility Emergency Response Plan, Risk Resilience Assessment Certification. Anything you'd like to add about this, Scott? I know we all need to say.
This talks about different scenarios, like what they need to do at the water treatment plant, if there's a tornado. Um, there's points of contact, there's list the restaurants, so if we have a contamination, we can call the restaurants right away.
That's important, we ran into that this year.
Yeah, um, so mostly, uh, the old version wasn't that far out of date, uh, but we did add the restaurants.
With the property.
Sensitive properties.
Okay, do we need to vote on this or is this just something we can make a note that we have?
The vote, voice vote, it's in the minutes, again. So make it official, official.
There's a signature.
There's a signature page, so, right.
So it's a standard motion for acceptance and is that enough? Just if we have a motion for acceptance and then a vote, okay, perfect. Do I have a motion to approve this, um, emergency risk?
Only a motion?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of approving the acceptance of the Water Utility Emergency Response Plan and Risk Assessment Certification, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried unanimously. Okay, awesome. Any public comment? Anybody on Zoom have any written comments? Anything from anyone up here that they want to highlight or bring up? Nope. Okay, then we will adjourn at seven nineteen.